United States, America, and the two of you are for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We do have open time for the public as the first item on the agenda, but is there anything? Anybody? Anything? Hearing that, we would like to move on to this. We have our new officer, David Latour.
Correct.
And we are going to swear in our, our chief, eighth officer? Fourth is up to eighth?
Yes.
This is the officer that was authorized at special town meeting in... I believe?
December fourteen.
Oh, December fourteen. It's right here.
David, let's stand next to him.
Again. We can do these big banner ones.
Put them on Facebook.
This is the one that goes. And despite what he may tell you, he cannot drive a cruiser with the blue lights on.
Should drive it if I was to get the shoulder on.
Stand near the flag.
I, David Latour.
I, David Latour.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will obey your true faith.
That I will obey true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I will uphold the laws.
I will uphold the laws.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the common self-managing.
And the common self-managing.
I will act at all times.
I will act at all times.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And knowledge.
And knowledge.
And a matter becoming.
And a matter becoming.
Of a police officer.
Of a police officer.
And preserve the dignity.
And preserve the dignity.
And rights.
And rights.
Of all individuals.
Of all individuals.
I will discharge my duties.
I will discharge my duties.
And exercise my authority.
And exercise my authority.
With integrity.
With integrity.
Fairness.
Fairness.
And an impartial.
And an impartial.
And ethical manner.
And ethical manner.
I will faithfully obey the lawful orders.
Faithfully obey the lawful orders.
Of my superiors.
My superiors.
And I will constantly strive.
I will constantly strive.
To honor this oath.
To honor this oath.
And promote its reverence.
And promote its reverence.
Among the faithful police officers.
Among the faithful police officers. Thank you.
David, congratulations.
Nice to meet you.
Congratulations.
We met before, thank you.
If you don't like that chair, just let me know. I don't mind this. I've had this one before. Hey, they were giving him up your pencils. Thank you, officer.
Thank you.
Take care. Good luck, son. Move on. We're a little bit ahead of schedule, but we could have... Oh, Aileen just left. Aileen had something to say. Department had meetings? Anything? Gentlemen?
Well, you know, the full-time officers on, as far as they have said. We recently had a reservation for one of our part-time officers to conflict with his full-time job. He took him down to the machinist's bike in the daytime. And the man's on the machinist's job, he had to afford some time in the department. So, I think that there's a must-do work.
Went to weather-wise?
Um, well, my... This last, uh, way my, uh... Four trucks have been made to repair it, you know. It's kind of held out until now, but, uh, these breakers and rear ends and stuff intact. Stuff like this type.
What happens if we have a big storm? How long are they going to be down?
Hopefully it went back tomorrow or to next week. Get the fire surrounded.
You know, we've had... All the rain last week, no real problems, so...
Uh, we closed down four suites yesterday. Two suites still close there, two in mine. On most fire, I think we've carried better than most house. We did a lot of, uh, cooking out of stuff, it's been a little bit. And, um, that helped out. We've still got a lot of storm, uh... Hopefully it's over.
I'll see you.
We've had snowstorms up until May, but, uh, those are worse, hopefully, than these.
Did you...
Governor...
Yes.
Clear urgency.
Strong, we had, uh, twelve to thirteen. Our preliminary estimate is, uh, nearly a thousand dollars. If we get that thirty thousand dollars, we will reimburse us seventy-five percent of that. State, uh, has always agreed to give us twelve and a half percent, and we carry all of that percent. The state over the last four years have not met their obligations. The last time we got some people money, we only get seventy-five percent, almost nothing.
But you do expect it?
Well, we... We might get a little more, depends on what they want to accept. They will not accept, they'll accept all our expense costs and all the time our trucks and plows are working, whether it's regular time or overtime. They will not reimburse us for regular pay. They will reimburse us for overtime. They will reimburse us for expenses.
How's the fu... How's the fuel line going, the budget line, the fuel?
Um, it's taken a hit. With all the storms, it's just a regular, uh, fuel life, we're pretty close to being out. Now, these big increases because of the last month of events throughout the world, uh, they're gonna, they're gonna hammer us. They're gonna hammer us.
Can that portion of the highway department be money as a deficit? Is it just the winter storms?
Yeah, it had to do with winter road activity, depending. Night travel highway, night travel activity, only weather-related issues.
Would you be expecting to need more monies to reimburse those funds because of increasing costs?
I'm hoping not, but I hope you're surprised. We're, we're trying to do certain things that we can stretch it.
Okay.
We won't stretch so much.
Mike, is there a question?
Uh, we have a lot of issues with road, road damage. Uh, we'll be spending a lot of money on coal packs next month, and when the plants open up around here, it'll help us out. But, uh, we have a lot of dirt roads to be, and, um, we'll be spending a lot of time there, who knows? Well, there'll be a lot of fuel costs net. We're just gonna have to carry it. And hopefully we can get by, it's, uh, eight months to the season. We, uh, won't want to go, so, at least two-thirds of us behind us, but this next year, I think, we're gonna have problems, fuel problems. Being, being able to afford the issue of...
Where are we with sand and salt?
Sand and salt, I got much, but not quite here, for one storm and a flood and salt and mud, because, uh, they don't have the luxury to, uh, spend that kind of money. So, if we use... We have another storm this week, and I use it up, I have to re-calculate. And that's probably been worse in the last month and a half. The month of January was a little... We had a full salt shed and it's gone. Salt, it's the same price as last year, but, um, because there's more mess, more activities, extra storms, we're having ice storms, we're using a lot more of that. That's it.
Anything else, Red?
Congratulations, grandfather.
Thank you.
Grandpa?
Yes. He was a tough man. It was a...
A girl or a boy?
Uh, nine hours, four hours, boy.
What's his name?
I haven't named one, but he's supposed to be called William.
William, who was great.
Absolutely, two grandfathers. Three grandfathers.
Take a...
Aileen, you wanted to talk to us.
Uh, voting moves, yes. Um, I've got a proposal about, uh, right now. I could use that wall right behind you gentleman and put my voting moves right there. Put them on the wall like it was over at the other town hall. Um, Mr. Randcourt was nice enough to go over to town hall and look at the, the voting moves to make them portable. It can be done, it's gonna cost some money. But then I was thinking again, why don't we just put them on the wall like they were over there? Maybe get some of this green paint and make them off, they won't look bad. Um, save a lot of money for everybody. Um, Mr. Burner and Mr. Randcourt said that they would volunteer to take them off the wall and bring them over here and, you know, throw them off or wherever if they could, and, um, it's up to you, you...
There's enough space.
There's plenty of space, that's what we had in the other town hall. And then I have three portable ones that I use for my presidential election. That's the only time you need more is that election, and you could put them, you know, on that wall. You know, I mean, you have enough space in there, and they could come to the door, leave here. In the summertime, it's walkway, beautiful to go out. Um, it's like candy cap, you know, for seniors. They can walk through the senior center, they wanna go out that way. Um, we only had one exit before in the town hall, and we got through it there. With the last presidential, I had, you know, eighty-six percent people coming in, and I think the longest they waited was maybe five minutes of that, because I had extra people working silver lining, just moved faster.
Those booths would not be permanently attached to the wall?
Yeah, it would be.
It would be?
Just like they are over there, they pull down.
Just like they are over there, they hold down.
Wouldn't penetrate the wall to hold them up against, that's my question.
They'd have to, they'd have to be anchored to the wall somehow, like they are over there.
Yeah.
They'd have to be anchored.
Yeah.
Those must be supported on a ledger board over there or something, I would think. Something must be holding the weight.
And they must, uh, they must be tied to some stuff, I would think. I can imagine what they would do here across.
As a ledger board to support the weight and then anchored into the wall. So, there'd be something, just like they look over there now.
Yeah.
I think Diana has an idea that we're going to shift this way, right?
Well, if you put them on that wall, I mean, either wall, it wouldn't matter.
Yeah, and I mean, I would assume that we would... We would fold up the chairs, you, or for your elections, fold up the chair, push the tables over to that wall.
That's what we did over there, we just pushed the tables against the other wall when it was raining, um...
I got no problem with that. Best, easiest, cheapest.
Yes. Anybody want to make a motion?
It's kind of the cheapest and the easiest thing to do.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion, how we do that, that we...
Second?
Second? Third?
Fourth, David?
I, good job.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Saves a lot of, uh, issues with the seniors.
Thank you, Mr. Randcourt, appreciate very much your volunteer.
And thanks to David also, Burner here.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Chief Hyde, did you have anything?
Uh, we've been dealing with the planning situation for the last couple days. We actually had about half of the houses that we had some funding problems with. We evacuated four of those houses between Sunday night and Monday afternoon, but we actually got people back in the houses by the end of the day on Monday. So, uh, things are, they've been pretty busy, expect more, but, uh, next month, the rain's coming in. That's taking up our time right now, pumping out, we have a lot of water, more portable pumps. Uh, we have one house with about almost four feet of water in the basement, just that we gotta empty out. But, uh, it's been mostly out there, cool on the outside, we're trying to clean that out. Other than that, let's keep this...
Can I ask a question? Chief Hyde, I noticed in the, the senior center, the, the water pipe going to the outside underneath the overhang has been removed, and that pipe has been taken out. Is that a decision that you made that perhaps we don't need an outside one?
It needs an outside, and until they figure out what's bothering this over there, I, uh, I told them that we could leave it out, so that we would put it back in and have another open pipe again. And the issue has to be addressed with how the heat gets up into that, that's, that's what the problem is.
I recommended that they put some of that white half-inch square tile, the, the grating, instead of insulated tile, the heat should rise up through there from the radiator.
They, they, I, I want, they're supposed to replace it, but I can give them off, uh, the first period of, you know, even out, even solve that problem, you don't have to sprinkle it, you got, uh, invested.
The assessors must have come in the room for a reason.
Yes, please.
I'd like to share with you this letter from our, uh, assessor.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Maybe the clerk should read that into the record.
I'm sorry, I didn't know what to say.
I was just saying the clerk might want to read the letter.
Oh, we'll put it, we'll make it attached, instead of spending the time reading it, why don't we just attach it to the net?
Okay.
We'll attach the, the...
I'll give a summary, because I'm sure people are wondering what it is.
Oh, the summary is that Lori is looking for a vehicle to run around town to do her assessments. She's willing to lease, rent, it won't work, but willing to rent her car to the town for fifty dollars a week plus mileage. The building department reads, "I seize a stipend of two hundred dollars a month regardless of use." Um, but they don't get, he doesn't get mileage on top of that. How many, do we, I guess the first question is, how many, do we know how many miles she put on a week or month?
Um, probably, I would put a hundred miles on provided inspection property.
Hundred miles a week.
Pardon me?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, do the assessors have a proposal?
Yeah, well, we're asking for some help. Lori has been with us now and has never had access to a vehicle. Many of the other departments in the town of South Newton who are required to do inspections have either access to a shared vehicle, but made arrangements for their own vehicle other than the fifty-one cents a mile. Lori is required to inspect the properties in town. For example, when the property owner requests an abatement, they are required to allow the principal assessor to go over the property card with the owner, so that there's mutual agreement to make sure that the records that are recorded on the property card are correct. It gives the taxpayer an opportunity to interact with our board. It allows us to have the confidence that what we are assessing is accurate and to try and reach an adequate resolution of a dispute. We've been very successful. We have a lot of confidence in our software. We have a lot of confidence in the work that Lori does. But we also believe that it is time that she had access to a vehicle. The fifty-one cents a mile with the rise in gas prices just is not adequate. It doesn't cover excise tax, insurance, repairs, and those kinds of things. And I think most people would understand and recognize that it's just not adequate. But this is the new apartment that the town relies on to generate revenue that is equitable and fair, that keeps all of the taxpayers feeling like they've been treated fairly, just as each and every one of you would want to feel that you've had, uh, that you've been treated well. And in this particular case, I don't think that Lori has been treated fairly. So, we're looking for solutions, suggestions, whatever. We have gone over all of the job descriptions that we can find. There is no requirement to any of them that she must provide a vehicle. She has to have a license, but not a vehicle.
Is it part of her job description that she does these home visits?
I beg pardon?
Is it part of her job description that she would visit these homes?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we don't give, we don't give an abatement unless...
But it's part of the job description?
Yes, because that's part of a fair assessment, fair and equitable assessment.
All right, I, I just got, who, who's got a shared vehicle? Who do we have that on a shared vehicle?
I have no idea, this is one of our kind of...
Oh, because I, I've just made a note, I, I was trying to figure out who has a shared vehicle, and no one.
Well, I think, I think the reality is that nobody has a shared vehicle.
Okay. Because when you said, I thought you were saying that somebody had a shared vehicle.
No, no, we're looking for some kind of a solution that would meet the needs of the town, be fair to board of assessors and their employees.
This could be broader than just the one instance, because it's my belief that the health department and the inspections department, building inspections department, have the same concerns and problems.
Okay.
In other words, if we're gonna do it for one, we should do it for all. And who else has the same situation?
Veterans agent.
Pardon me?
Veterans agent, but we arrived at a Skype in for that.
I think the easiest thing is there, as far as I can remember, there's three cars out there that departments have. Highway has a car, fire has a car, police has a car, and I can't think of any others.
Water, the water department have?
Well, that's the same, water and highway, same.
They're all emergency vehicles.
Yeah, they're all, yeah, again, they're all emergency vehicles.
They're all supervisors too that drive those vehicles. You're talking about the fire chief, highway chief.
No, we're not, we're not trying to take it away.
No, 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 I, I'm looking for a solution. But we, first of all, we gotta, I, I would say examine how many people are in the same boat. Is this the same situation as this? And after we determine that, then we can try to come to a resolution.
I, I don't know how other towns do it, I, I don't know, you know, the, the city, I, I'm, in the city, I'm sure there's vehicles, but... Because you'd have the health agent, the veterans agent, um...
Building department.
Building inspector. There.
The dog officer, they would take emergency vehicle, right?
An assessor, so I see four vehi, four possible vehicles that would be, or four departments that would need a good user vehicle. I don't know how you're gonna do that, because it's gonna be this, I mean, we've tried this with insurance companies, and it's, I want the car, and you want the car, and, you know, it doesn't work, because we all want the car on the same day.
I can't do my job, because I'm, I require them to do it.
Right, yeah.
We, we need to be flexible, because we need to accommodate the property owner when they're available. So many people work, both, both people work, and so it needs to be, needs to have the flexibility when...
Like, has there ever been an assessor that had a vehicle in this town?
No, no, I mean, we just, the, the department has just got those cars not terribly long ago, as far as I know. Chief Hyde got the last one, he didn't have a vehicle until, you were, yours was the last one that was... You were the last one to get a town vehicle, I believe, weren't you? You, the last, the old red leftover thing that was a rattle trap was the one you had at first, but that was the first one you had, wasn't it?
He, one day, it was a retired cruiser.
Cruiser, yeah.
Well, is, is there some way that we could make it, you know, compensate the use of your car? There's some way we could make it equitable.
I think that's what the federal, that's the mileage.
Fifty-one cents, that's what they figured it costs to operate the car.
That's what the fifty-one cents is, and that's what the federal government sets, is the reimbursement.
I agree with the 350 per, the LDI's.
Pardon?
I, I think fifty-one cents is kind of insulting, at 350 a gallon.
And right to Congressmen, that's, with all due respect.
Yeah, it'll adjust it next year.
Set by the feds, and that's what the feds set.
A period of time when it was fifty-one cents, and the gas was back down to two dollars a gallon, and it was still fifty-one cents.
People are still getting fifty-one cents.
It'll get adjusted the next time it runs.
We've set a policy that would be the reimbursement for the town, is whatever the feds are setting.
I mean, Lori's driving a hundred miles a, a month.
A hundred, a week?
A, a week?
Four hundred.
A week, four hundred.
It's not every week, you know what I mean? Do some driving in the winter, do, do peak time, like spring, for the...
But, but, so, so, so how many miles on an average week do you drive?
Well, we get a log, and actually see what we're looking at. I'd like to see a log with actually, Doc, we did the same thing with the building inspector.
That's a good idea.
Get a log, but I'm telling you right now, we're probably not gonna get a vehicle.
No.
There's no money. There's no money for this. This is, this is really kind of not appropriate talk when we're talking about even more budget cuts. There's no vehicle.
So, do you realize that, you know, that, that any building department inspections that bring in additional weapons to the town...
Regardless, regardless, there's no money to buy a vehicle. Excuse me, ma'am, there's no money to buy a vehicle.
Let me ask you this, then. If Lori is not able to provide her vehicle to do her job, how is she supposed to do that? Whatever flows from what she does...
I don't know your name, sir, could you at least give us your name, please?
My name is Yara, as well, I'm a volunteer.
All right, with, with all due respect, sir, there's never been a vehicle in the assessor's office.
I understand that.
Okay.
But on the same token, if she cannot do her job, go...
She can't do her job, then she may not be able to do her job, and she may not leave that job. If she can't do the job because she doesn't want to take the fifty-one percent per mileage, then maybe she needs to find another job. We've been down this road before, before you were on the board. It always gets to a point where Lori will make a demand, or she'll leave.
I don't think so, I think Lori...
I think that's a historical point.
All right, let's, let's, let's bring it under, let's, let's...
You're talking about making...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, everybody, let's get a little decorum going. David, do you have any further comments?
I just, I don't, you know, I hear her concerns. I don't see it as even possibility. I don't see it as a possibility. Now, if you're complaining about the fifty-one percent reimbursement, that's out of our control. With all due respect, and if she doesn't feel that this job is meeting the needs financially for herself, then perhaps she needs a different job.
But you know what I would say that...
Okay, then, Ann?
Didn't we say we paid the stipend to the veteran?
No, not the veterans' agent, the building inspector is the only person who gets a stipend.
We give him two hundred dollars a month.
Building inspector. Well, would there be some kind of...
But we base our, we base that on a hundred dollars, a hundred, a hundred miles a week, that's what we base it on.
But he did a log, and he had a log for objective data points.
If we get a log...
Right, no, that's fine, that's, if you want to go down that road, I'm just saying.
If we could compensate a little beyond the fifty-one cents.
Lori already...
I'll tell you, you're gonna run, then, I think you're gonna run into tax problems, because then it's income and everything else.
We already have an issue with the building inspector, and in fact, we should probably, we haven't dealt with it, which came up in our audit, what Mike's saying, is that we're giving him a stipend. Um, at this point, what he's doing is keeping a log of his, a log of his, of his inspections.
Comparing apples and oranges, and it just gets...
Maybe what we should do is, all right, I want to go around, yeah.
I just want to say something about, I mean, what about, and, and Ed would know this better, but do we, could there be an excess vehicle, perhaps? I mean, what, why are we talking about buying a new vehicle? Don't we have vehicles, perhaps, that we, I mean, right now, we, I know we have two cruisers on the capital plan. I don't know if we're gonna buy them, but I'm just saying, I, I know we've been, we've bought them since I've been here. Are there vehicles that are available?
And that, you know, I can't, happened to look behind the police station today, and there are a few cruisers. I don't know whether they're all operable and all in use.
Um, I know, can I speak to the chief, but what he usually does is, he, uh, when he gets one, he gets rid of it. That's what we did.
Yeah.
Fire, police were able to take a vehicle, and there was a period where, you know, work was coming right with the vehicle. And then he had some people in the academy needed a cruiser, and if it got destroyed when they're training, it wasn't a big thing, and you were only getting traded off with cruisers, that's all. There might be time to get a cruiser this year, uh, there might be a vehicle.
We couldn't afford, we couldn't afford to buy the cruiser this past year, it was taken off the capital improvement, may have no money in it.
No, I know, but he's saying is if, if, you're gonna replace cruisers this year, no matter what you do, because the cruisers are gonna, the cruisers are at the end of their useful life.
If we have the money, what if we don't have the money?
Well, we push those cruisers to the end of their useful life, we'll have to make a deci, we'll have to make a decision at that point in time, what, what we do, but... We skipped buying a cruiser last year, and which is why he has two on this year, to, because we were doing one a year. Perhaps what we should do is get a handle on her mileage, keep a log, come back and see where we are. I don't see a good solution to this problem, but we should at least explore, have her keep a log, so we know how many miles. Because right now, if it's a, if it's a hundred miles a week, that's fifty dollars a week, it's reimbursement on the fed rate. Um, so that's two hundred dollars on the year, which is what we give the, the health, building inspector.
That we figured it out.
That's how we came to that number.
There's one thing that you do need to know, though, that, uh, we are under a time constraint. Um, if, for example... Um, if, for example, the inspections are not done, uh, for the abatements.
What's stopping her from doing it?
Those, those, uh, abatements will automatically be granted, which the town...
But Barbara, are you saying she's refusing to use her vehicle to do her job?
No, she would like to be adequately, fairly compensated.
So then that task should occur, then, and there should be no time put in that she's gonna do her job, right?
She, there was no requirement in any of the job postings or any of the job descriptions that the person who was hired had to provide a vehicle.
Is there any, is there any, what's your title, chief assessor, primary?
Assistant assessor.
Assistant assessor. Are there assistant assessors in other towns of this size that have their own car?
I don't know.
All right, does the, do the assessors have a blind item in their budget from last year, or this year that we're in? That they, that they can afford to?
We would, we would be happy to look over our expense budget. I'm, I'm not sure what's...
I don't know that you can pay more than fifty-one cents a mile, um, but you're...
Well, if, if we were leasing it, we'll take that from our expense line. If we were, um, uh, leasing it or renting it for a day, we would take it from that expense line.
Well, I mean, you have your...
That's an agreement between the town. That's, that's getting tricky.
Well, that, I mean, that, I, I don't agree with it, but they certainly can look at their own expense lines. But I, I, you know.
I, I just would hate the town to, um, grant abatements by default, because we can't...
I think that would be a problem if...
But again, I, Mrs. McFlan, again, I'm asking that question, is she gonna be able to do her job?
She is willing and able to go out and do the, the abatements.
Up until this point, it was not an issue.
Well, gas wasn't over three dollars a gallon.
So again, it's, if the reimbursement from the feds was seventy cents a mile, would you be having this discussion?
Perhaps not.
All right, so can we increase that? No, it's set by the federal government.
So we're looking for input and cooperation from, from the board of select, to help design a solution.
I, I, I think the, the abatements have to get done. I don't think there's any question that that's gotta happen, and for now, the, this problem is not gonna get a solution today, tonight, tomorrow, or next month.
I would hope that it's done before next month, cause we'll run out of time.
But, but, but those abatements have to get done.
They have to be done.
Yeah.
Question though, if I might, of the assessor's department, is the mileage requirement, the requirement to drive a car consistent from month to month throughout the year? If we introduce some stipend, would that be paid regardless of the mileage, or would be...
If, if you wish to tie it to mileage, I would...
I don't think we can. We have an issue with that around taxes or something, but again...
I'm just guessing, I'm no tax buddy, but I'm just guessing.
Seriously, is the mileage requirement the same, or are there times when the assistant assessor doesn't go out?
If, yes, it's, it's what...
So if we had a constant stipend of two hundred months, twelve months a year, and yet there were some months or weeks, whatever, then the car wasn't used, would that be fair and just?
No, we're looking for something that is. So we're saying if you kept a log, and, and that log showed that average of a hundred a month, and, and we can pay two hundred dollars a month, even though she didn't drive for that month, yes, that would be fair. There were, yeah.
I just heard the word fairness, and meager, and all of those judgmental sorts of terms, you know, being used here, and I'm wondering who's judging whom.
But I, I thought our, we, we came to an agreement that, thank you, we're gonna take a look at Lori's mileage, right? And then see if there are excess vehicles someplace that we may be able to...
Shared, leased, loaned, rented?
I think we should get back to that, sounds like a reasonable...
Yeah, it was just the, the financial mechanics of the thing. I was just doing some rough math here. Incremental expense, if I have a fixed cost in owning a car, then the incremental mileage that I get, how does that compare against my incremental expense of gas? Now, you know that, as you're at least married to an accountant, so there's fixed costs, there's incremental costs. We oughta look at it that way. Fixed cost coverage.
Would you ever like to...
Be happy to do the analysis. Just give me the miles and I'll do it.
All right, I'll do it.
And I, I will even do a probability matrix for you on how much gas may cost over the next twelve months, and I'll give you some scenarios, and we can figure it out.
Say you're four bucks by Labor Day.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, let's do, do we have?
If you want to add anything else, because this is your issue.
All right, before we, before we go on, Mr. Chair?
I just wanna be reassured that things are gonna get done in a timely fashion in the assessor's office.
I would think that should go without saying, yeah. Um, just so we all are clear as to where we're going from here. Where are we going from here? What's, how's this issue going from here?
Lori, the logs.
Lori's gonna provide the logs. She actually keeps logs already, so she can just gather them and submit them. And then you're going to, um, explore the option of an excess vehicle, or see if there's the possibility of one. That's how you said it. Oh, and the assessors are gonna look at their budget and see if there's any monies available for, to help.
Um, it might be a few strong, um, expense line.
I have two comments if I may.
You may.
Okay. Um, do you have a busy time of the year, like, let's say, three months out of the year, where you use a vehicle real a lot?
Yeah.
And then perhaps the other nine months or six months, you don't? Could, could you give me how many months a year you get, you're very, very busy?
Um, uh, March.
In the field, I'm sorry. You're always busy in your office.
Um, I would be very busy for four months.
Yep.
Cause I'm hoping till June thirty of to do building permits, so I'm very busy at that time. And then, um, in the summer, I would be as busy as needed, cause I, it's just cyclical inspections. You have to do so many parcels every year to get the whole town done. So, and in the fall, not so much.
Okay.
That's very helpful to us, it really and truly is. You know, and I gotta reiterate again, and I can sympathize with your cause. We have other people in the same boat, and, and if we give, if, yeah, if we do this, then they're going to say, of course.
Absolutely.
Gee, I, I want one, why does she have one, and I don't have one, so, we're gonna be very careful what we do and how we do it, but we're gonna serve all, all the people, so, okay.
All right.
This is a very important public function that needs to be done, so it brings in revenue.
Diana.
I just also wanna point out, you mentioned a couple times about the federal rate. You have a policy that basically says you use that rate, but that's your policy. I mean, you could, there's towns who have a lower rate, you know, so you could have a higher rate, I'm just saying. And I'm, I'm suggesting that maybe, I mean, you could consider, like Jess said, really calculating some costs, you know, do like a cost analysis, and then come up with a rate that Lori would use from like March to June. And, and the justification for everyone else not using it for regular mileage is that she's doing, you know, in, it's not like you're traveling to a meeting. When Rich travels to a meeting, that's outside of his stipend. He uses regular mileage for that, but, um, and I would suggest that...
Come back again?
When Rich travels to meetings, he's paid the fifty-one cents a mile for...
In addition to his two hundred dollar monthly.
Correct. The stipend is for his local inspections in town.
Is that everybody else's understanding of how that two hundred dollars?
I didn't have that, but I have it now.
I'm, I'm sure that I've mentioned it in the past when we've done budgeting, but, um, but anyway, that would be just a suggestion. If we can't do the cars, just doing a, like, doing sick, I don't know what Lori would feel is, is fair, but doing maybe sixty cents or sixty-five cents a mile, just for that period of time, and then the rest of the time is...
Just to touch on a few things.
It would not sound like a federal...
Just, just to go talk about cars for a second.
But the problem is, if you pay more than it, I think it may be income to the employee.
Just, just to touch cars, the, the cruiser that Ed drove, when he got it from the highway, I mean, from the police department, was barely safe, barely safe. Um, and they used a car to pick items off, so it was not the greatest vehicle. But, you know, it's what we have and, and whatnot, so I don't know what, what the shape of the cruisers are gonna be that come offline, and what, how great they're gonna be, or how much money it's gonna take to reinvest money into those cruisers to get them safe. I mean, talking about new tie rods, new brakes, and all that kinda stuff. So, I mean, I, I, again, I, I, I would assume it'd be nice to have everybody have their own company car here, but in the reality of it, there's no money. There's no money at all.
We have, we have an action plan, so.
But, is, I mean, you have to check for, maybe Diana, check for your company or Lori. Can Lori's, or the, the department, get a key from the other department and get their fuel over there? Because it's about thirty-five, forty cents cheaper than your box.
Yeah, a good, a good thought, yeah.
That gets tricky. Okay, what?
I just, like, if, if I had a vehicle that was going over there, just grabbing some kind of a policy there, saying, when you can fill it, when you can't.
I, I see a problem with that, is Lori goes... And just for, for instance, Lori goes, because she's doing assessing, Diana's going to a meeting, does she run over and fill up her tank to go to a meeting, and how much is it?
I'm just saying, there's a difference in the market, if it's possible, so she'll be able to look at.
So are you talking about, she pays cash for the, the gas to the town?
No, no, it would be...
And then be reimbursed for the mileage?
No, town pays for the gas.
Town pays for the gas.
Well, it wouldn't be absurd, it would be, a bill, what is it now, like, school has, they've got their fire department, police department, the various departments have a council.
They're filling.
And they get a key, key unique to that vehicle, that only can be used to that vehicle, which records every time they go there, and how much they use to, to the tenth of a gallon. And then it produces a bill for that amount, but...
Those are all?
Those are sent to the individual's department.
But those are all s- town vehicles?
Town or a school vehicle, sort of, right.
Right, not a private vehicle.
Correct.
But do you, you have the same arrangement?
But, and you would have to check it out, if it's possible.
Yeah, I see a major headache, could add the problem, but, all right, moving on.
But Mike, so just if we raised the reimbursement rate, that, this all goes away.
What if we raised the reimbursement rate? You can raise it to everybody?
I wouldn't, I'm not suggesting that.
But I mean, do we wanna look at?
I mean, it's reasonable for everyone else.
I mean, should we look at it anyways, because?
Well, I, it would be nice to know how many miles other people are driving, you know, before you, before you selectively pick one person to raise the rate for, how many, how many people are in the same boat as her, and how many people are more than her, and how many people are less?
But we're talking about a limited area of active public time.
I, I think we keep a log, and we'll come back and visit the issue, and then, and the assessors get the chance to put it in their budget and, and...
We put in a car for increased mileage in our budget, but just for next this period, but what we're trying to do is...
For the next four months.
Deal from now till, till thirty, and something, something's got to give.
Well, just to let you know, the, the fed, the state's actually talking about another seven percent cut, state aid.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't...
The state's talking about another seven percent cut this year, so...
Well, we already have through our budgetary budgetary.
I'm just saying, for next year, for next fall.
So you're talking just from now till June?
Yes, we've got to buy some new inspections or...
Seems like the easiest would be to raise a rate.
I, I got a suggestion. I got a suggestion if I may. Why don't we ask Diana, and, and, uh, we'll put like a week or two on this at the most, and we'll ask Diana to look at what the other departments are compensating for mileage and/or sta- stipend, and report back to us, and we'll see how many of those people are getting mileage and stipend for using their own personal cars, and then we'll see who's not and who is, and go from there.
And also, that's how many miles they're driving, because we definitely have a log.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So they must have a log as well.
Well, this, everybody should be keeping a log.
Right, I would, oh.
Right, no, so...
Is this someone a good thing to do?
That's great, I completely agree with the idea. She does need to be fairly compensated for the use of the vehicle. It's just how we're gonna get there, that's legal and ethical and...
It was important work, and it's been on the table for a long time, it was just, I think, it requires... It needs to be...
Yes, all right.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, moving on. We have approval of minutes, and we have a long, long list of minutes to approve, starting with December twenty-eighth.
December twenty-eighth, that's when you can back?
I got December fourteenth.
I got, the next one coming for is December twenty-eighth.
Yep, how about the fourteenth, that's before, or after?
The, the agenda only says...
Yeah, you're right.
Oh, no, it has twen- the fourteenth, because we can have a quorum, the right quorum. We need...
I was absent, so I'll recuse.
We need me, Doug, and Ian on the twenty... On the fourteenth.
On the fourteenth?
On the fourteenth.
Okay.
We need Doug.
Well, that's right, that is a point of law.
It was a short meeting.
Yes.
Bob and Bob Blanchett should be capitalized. We can look at all of them all at once?
Well, we can.
Well, no, cause we have to do that one separate, cause only three of us are, can vote on that one.
So this is on the...
Fourteenth.
We're looking at the fourteenth person?
Looking at the fourteenth. Anybody?
Meeting over at eight thirty.
Yeah. The, the long-winded guys must have been out of town.
Yep, a motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Abstain.
Abstain.
All right, now, you want to approve the rest as a block? As a block, or do you wanna do a little?
Depends on the quorum, isn't it, the quora?
Oh, we would, well, let's do the twenty-eighth.
Doug was absent on the twenty-eighth.
Short meeting on the twenty-eighth.
The twentieth is only, I mean, I think Robert should have his first name capitalized on the last page, that's all.
All right, so move to make, correct Bob Blanchett's name to, to capital B O B.
Otherwise, it looks about, about right.
So is that a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
I...
And Douglas, you abstain.
Yes, I do.
So now we move on to...
January sixth.
January sixth, which is another, looks like relatively quick meeting.
This is just a walkthrough, we're sort of look, looking around.
But there were a number of motions, including key distribution, furniture, pay, and payroll warrant.
On, on the key distribution, if I wanna get a key to get in the office, how do we get in the office?
In our office?
Yeah.
You have to get a, you have to go to the police department, get the door key, and then you have to get a key from Diana.
Have to go to Greenfield?
David would like to have a key for the office, and, and when you did your key, uh, when we did the key list back in, whenever this was, maybe it was in January, I thought it was in the fall, um, you had voted only to let, to make keys for the chairs of the boards and committees, so, and you didn't take one, so there is one, but I just told David that was...
Is that a door key, or is that a front door key?
It's just an office door, just not a front.
All right, so then, um, somebody wanna, uh, somebody do something?
Move to approve the, uh, meeting on January sixth.
He's your big supporter.
I know, I know.
It is done.
It is done.
All in favor?
Hi. Can I just say, can it be placed someplace, so I don't have to drive to Greenfield if I need to make comments?
Does anybody wanna?
You should.
Do you wanna keep a key to the selectman's office at the police station?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Move one of our keys over there, so that way, you know, if you guys want, we go there, get the key, both keys.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
Okay, both keys, and the front door key and office key.
Office key, if needed, yeah.
All right, moving on to January eleventh.
I wasn't there.
Ian wasn't there. She was in the...
Move to approve.
I second.
All in favor?
All right.
January twenty-fifth. Oh, the, the old reliables are there.
I'm trying to say McDougal's not a reliable?
Doug and Jess?
Doug and Jess and Mike, uh, so Jess over here moves to approve these minutes. Let me check and see that Bob Blanchett's name is capitalized.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
March first. Everybody's here. Voting post, the issue of voting was on that one too.
Oh, yeah.
Payroll warrants, wetland protection, Charlie, we didn't have a lot of motions here.
No, a lot, well, we did talk about, a lot of us, we couldn't do anything, but like, the town hawks are waiting for the building reuse committee.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, March first meeting.
Second.
Favor.
Aye. Hey, Frank Coley.
That's it, we're done.
Alright, move to adjourn.
No payroll warrant, how come no payroll warrant?
It is a payroll week.
Oh, it is a payroll week.
We do have a bill warrant. We have a bill warrant, W eleven dash thirty seven, for the amount of fifty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents.
Motion to approve.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We don't have any P C Fs, we don't have any P R Fs, we have an a- annual town caucus warrant. I only found one on the floor.
Thank you. You have a pen?
Sure, I should leave a couple of those in the drawer.
You don't have the right table.
This is on my desk.
You got a pen? I did, I was gonna give you one. You want this desk? No, no, David wants.
We have the.
That's the chipped handle one.
We have the annual town caucus, um, warrant. Um, it's the, it's the same warrant as ever, um, and it's, mm, March twenty-fourth, seven o'clock, Thursday, town election is May second, and the polls will remain open until nine at the caucus. Do you really, you want me to read off all of the offices, or are you satisfied that?
I just have a question, Mr. Chair, if I remember right, there has to be twenty-five people there for it to be a valid caucus?
Um, it doesn't say, but that's town meeting number, that's a.
Town meeting number, but I, I just wonder if that should be recorded in here? Um, to, is there a minimum requirement of attendance at the caucus?
I saw there was forty-five also.
I don't know that you would put it on the warrant, but you, it's twenty-five, you have to have twenty-five to open it.
Can we ask Eileen before we, is she in there still?
Ask her if it should be on the caucus, maybe on the warrant.
I'm assuming she generated this.
I'm not trying to be nitpicking, but you know, seriously, if four people were there, they could take over the caucus, if there was no twenty-five.
Um, I don't see where it says anything about twenty-five.
Typically, I always believe myself, oh, forty-five.
Last time I was at a caucus, they counted.
Doesn't have to be on the, doesn't have to be on the warrant, but if you could announce it, that we need twenty-five people. Oh, that's right, well, it'll be on, it'll be recorded and on the website tomorrow.
Caucus is on March twenty-fourth, Thursday, seven o'clock, and we need a quorum of twenty-five.
Voters.
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 Um, I really need a motion to sign the warrant.
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I sign, going that way. Um. Oh, I thought we did that, um, there's other, what folder do I have, signatures, oh. We have a agreement by in between the town of Southampton and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. This is that, uh, joint grant we have, right? The housing grant with the other community?
Housing rehab, yes, that's correct, yes.
Is that with, uh, Palmer or something like that, or? Um, it is Granville, Blanford, Montgomery.
Okay.
Uh, small cities program, wow, that's, those are real small cities. Um, and they have, I guess if they needed a revised signature line?
This is for the home repair program?
What this is, is this a portion of the funding that we received to do a housing, uh, a housing study for the other communities? We have already done one for Southampton, but when we applied for the housing rehab for the five communities, four or five communities, we included planning, housing, planning money for the other communities, to do housing plans, housing production plans. And this is, this is the contract to do that, I believe.
Okay, is this the thing to serve the elders?
It's, it's low to mod income, it's not necess- it's not just elders, it's low to mod income. It's the housing rehabilitation program, it's part of that.
Cause I've got something for us tonight, home repair program for the elders, so I'd like to, uh, to start on that, brief you.
So, this, this is I, requiring our agreement between us and Pioneer Valley for a thirty thousand dollar, um.
Right, that's for them to do that housing production plan for the other communities, but we're the lead community, so we have to sign all the contracts.
Where is the thirty thousand, where's the thirty thousand coming from?
It's part of the grant funding.
Motion to sign?
Motion to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Looks like it just required my signature?
Yeah.
You want them to see what you can.
What's that?
They have a, oh, that's other stuff, um, they have a, should we try? Reimbursement for subway?
Fire department?
Yes, fire department, they, I think they, hey, through, and they've got, only, only year on this.
You only have eye on that. We have a memo to the town of Southampton Board of Selectmen from the P V P C, uh, town owner agreement, please find enclosed a town owner agree, owner agreement for the F Y ten housing rehab applicant that needs to be signed and returned to me. Um, and we have, oh, and this is out of, this is for one other town.
Right, the, um, right, these are the contracts for the, with the homeowners, to, to do the homeowners' agreements, to actually do the work in these people's homes.
This is a request for a homeowner in Blanford.
This is like rehab.
Send this down to Diana, please, I want, is that the same as?
Let me see, I think it is, I think we, we told them to advertise in there, so I just wanted to ensure.
Alright, so do I have a motion to sign this?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have another one from, I guess we have a series. Um, this one is for Granville.
It's the same thing, it's Northampton's version, yes, we have the same type of program here.
Okay, we have the same program, who's our liaison?
Um, there's a woman at P V P C that you would contact, I can give you her name.
Laurel Foley?
Yes.
Oh, excellent, so we'll all start with that.
Yeah, yeah, we need, uh, if anyone is interested in applying, we, we really, um, need more applicants, so, if you know anyone, definitely, tell them.
But I'll get your name from her tomorrow, I wanted to start it, I've got a whole, all kinds of literature on it.
Alright, can I have a motion to sec- is there a second?
Second.
And now I have another one of those for, uh, people on, oh, gun road, Southampton, we have one.
We have one.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we have one for Granville again.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we have one for Blanford again.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So Blanford finally got back to us, and we have a little situation to attend to. Blanford?
Oh.
That's the envelope that goes to those P V P C things.
All of these go in there?
No, I think it's the contracts, right, oh, no, that is Laurel Foley.
If you, yeah, if you just wanna give it back to me, I'll make sure they go back in. I wanna make sure you. One you had to have two originals, I just wanna make sure you have two originals, that was the, that was the housing.
Mike, can I ask a question? Do we reimburse the, the highway guys when they, they have to take a recertification, or they pay for it themselves?
You had to pay for it on.
Okay, 'cause the E M T recert here, four hundred and fifty dollars, but I wasn't sure, we paid for that.
I believe.
We pay for, I mean, if we pay for, we pay for, but I just don't.
I believe they get the, Ed, remember, that's a co- that was a union, it's a union bargain.
But this is, this is the fireway department.
No, I know, but I'm sorry.
Fire department.
Your question was the highway, just to compare it to.
Right.
My remem- reference is, it's a bargain thing, remember, he has so many people for.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
He decides who goes because he pays them.
Right, but it, for the.
Who goes from highway, it could be E M T.
No, no, I.
Just trying to figure out.
Terms that they get for, for the highway.
So in, in the past, do you ever, you recognize that we would do that?
Diana, why is it, oh, there's a lot of old mail in here.
It's still hanging around.
I think it should just be taken out and filed.
Stuff from last year, actually, I know.
April twenty-second, April sixteenth.
Two thousand and ten, alright.
The only thing, it's current, it's February fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, a, a complimentary letter from Ron Piesiak to Ed Colley about the plowing that's going on around the school and how well it's being done. I hope to God this hasn't been floating around, it has been floating around. The, the express mail stamp on this is February seventh of two thousand and eleven, and the letter inside is date, dated September twenty-eighth of two thousand and ten.
Yeah.
It's floating around since all then.
Close warnings?
Yeah. I don't know, you went out and.
Came back?
Came back, I went to Westford, Mass, okay.
Why'd it go to Westford, Mass?
Oh, it's from Westford, Mass, actually, I wonder if this, it was misdirected.
What was the, sendee's address?
It was to Diana, but it came out of someplace, G E S Incorporated, Littleton Road, Westford, Mass. First, February seventh of eleven, and I think it was because it had the wrong symbol originally, and we sent it to you, looks like it might have had it wrong.
I don't recognize that company name either.
Um, okay, county, county administrators report?
Yeah, the only thing I have, um, is, I just wanted to update you on the, or, give you a copy of my budget, I gave a copy of my budget to the finance committee tonight, so I made copies for you guys, um, it's very preliminary, it has some additions, which I've already discussed with the finance committee that I understand funding is very tight, so, um, you know, some of these things may not work, but some of it's technology and the new building, a lot of the expenses are associated with the new building, um, I don't know if you, you wanna just take a look at it, and then we can talk about it later, or if you wanna go over it, um.
Let some more on that, can we just look at?
How much more has it been last year?
Well, um, I did, these are, because I'm, I'm giving this to the finance committee, I did all my individual lines separate, but what I did is, on the last two pages of your packet that I gave you, I gave you my budget worksheet with those numbers in it, so you could see the differences. So you can see, I, I don't have a total number for you, but you can see the line, the columns that show the differences. So my biggest increases are the, um, custodial expenses, and that's actually the contract, that's just a placeholder for the janitorial contract. I used the state contract pricing to come up with that twenty thousand, it's actually a little bit less than that, and I also put some supplies in there for the, um, for Joe. On, on the first, on the second to last page of the packet where it says, yeah.
Oh, there it is.
Um, but I, I realize money is, is difficult, and I think we still kinda need to work out how that, you know, how that's gonna fit in with Joe, and he's doing the police department, and those, that expense line also pays for the, for the building supply, custodial supplies at the police station too, so, um, I kept all, I kept the budgets for, um, the police station, if I, or the police department, if I had them incorporated in my budgets, I left them, and I changed the titles to be police department and town hall. I still did a budget for those police department lines, um, for gas and electric and building expenses, but I'm not sure if you want to have the chief, I, I'm not sure how you wanna have those budgets now, like, I don't u- I don't manage the highway department and the fire department's expense budgets for their buildings. In fact, they don't have separate expense lines for their buildings, they're just incorporated into their general budgets. So now we have a situation where the police department has kind of its own separate building budget, because that is a leftover from when we had the town hall budget, so. I mean, you don't have to make a decision tonight, but I just wanted to let you know, that's what I did.
I mean, this thing shows a two hundred and thirty-three percent increase.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's, so that's the technology services, and the one thing I was hoping to get this year was a backup for our server, um, but again, we had a discussion about that at finance committee, and, and that's something, that's kind of the ideal situation for the backup, and, um, it's really, the key is the, um, reinstallation of the information if the server were to crash, but it's more of an insurance policy, you know what I mean? It's more of, we haven't had any issues with the server crashing, but now that we're working with I B S, they had given us, um, some suggestions on upgrading computers that have very low memory, which are in danger of crashing, that's what's in my equipment line, those computers, and the service line is mostly, um, twenty-five hundred of it is just regular technology, which we budget every year, and then twenty-seven or whatever the difference is, the, um, the backup server. But if, you know, I, I'm sure that's something that could be eliminated, and we could just go to a different, we could just get an, uh, external hard drive and just swap it out with the other hard drive and just take it offsite ourselves, but if we have a crash and it has to be put back onto a server, it's just gonna, it's, it's going to cost money. But that's if we have one, there's a chance we won't, so.
I, I still have the pro- I'm still trying to evaluate how much this building used to cost us on its own, and how much the old town hall used to co- co- cost us on its own before we obviously renovated, and now, I'd like to know how much the renovated building costs, and how much the old town hall still costs us.
I know you do, I know, I, I know that you wanna know that, the, the issue is that, the building expenses that I have in here, I did, I, I broke it down in detail, and you can see that on the first page, and you, I don't, I didn't give you all the specific numbers I have for that, but I feel like that's a fairly accurate budget. Our previous, um, building maintenance budget, building expense budget, last year for the, for that town hall was five thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars, and I feel that this year, we're gonna be a little under ten thousand for this building. For gas and electric, I don't have that information yet, because we haven't had a full month in this building on a bill, so once we, next month, I will, I will give you that information and try to project it out, but right now, I, I just don't have enough information.
Square footage is so much bigger.
But, yeah, the efficiency should be so much higher, that it should be offsetting the square footage.
This room has never been this warm. This room has never been this warm.
What, in, in?
No, in general, I mean, you weren't planning for it here for years and years.
Oh, we were planning here, we'd be sitting here with our earmuffs on, because those windows were broken and open and, you know, it was freezing in here.
Uh, we got, I, I, what I did for gas and electric is I just swapped them, because I do think that, just in the, the month that I got for this building, I think we're gonna be around fifteen hundred a month, and that's about what it had been over there, thirteen to seventeen hundred, depends.
I mean, if we come out where this building isn't, heat and electricity isn't terribly more than the old, inefficient building, we made a good swap.
Right, I, I think gas and electric wise, we're gonna be okay, of course, we also, when I get the bills now, they're not, the senior center isn't being utilized, and once that kitchen is in place, and they're over there, and they're having programs every day, um, you know, that's gonna increase the utilization, I don't know how much, but.
The heat must come out over there anyway.
Yeah, and they, it's heated right now, so, just lights and, and I'm thinking utilities for the appliances.
They cook a good dinner, then the heat'll float over here.
So this is a very rough draft, I just gave it to the finance committee tonight, the finance committee will be here next week to meet with you, and to talk in totality about the budget and where they're at, but, um, I just wanted to give you this information.
Thank you, Diane.
Do we wanna digest this and come back and have a meeting, this is our budget.
Yeah, it's your budget, I think you should look at it, make recommendations.
You know, I looked, I was up with finance with Diana, um, and she was going over parts of the finance, and there are some issues, and, and they can get us off track right now, and I have some issues on, in my mind, but I think we should probably table it to another time, because we have some other stuff to do tonight, that's our.
But I mean, come back and have a, a scheduled block of time to go over our budget?
Yes.
So that we all are intimately aware of.
Mean in addition to next week's meeting with finance?
Next week's meeting with finance is for what?
Just a preliminary, kinda touch base with them, they're done having all their budget meetings.
In general, the whole budget, I'm talking about coming back and talking about.
Your budget.
Just talking about, and I hear what you're saying, but, um, I talked to Bob, and he really hasn't heard back from anybody about revenue projections, and I asked him to come down to ask you if, if we, uh, would write a letter, sort of, asking, could you please help us with this, from the select board to help us? And I thought, you know, he agreed with that, I guess he couldn't just say, but.
Well, I think we should have done it, I think we should, if you wanted to make a motion, I think we should.
I, I make a motion to support, um, the chairman of the finance committee to get that revenue and projections out, uh, to them, so they can help make the budget.
Or make it a second request to the departments to.
The other departments are talking about?
Yes, but he, Bob knows which ones need me.
Big and bold, a copy of our original letter with a copy that this is a second request.
That's a great idea, I could print that out tonight, and then you could sign it before you leave, that'd be great. Good idea.
By getting back to the budget, I, it would be nice to actually set aside some time to look at it, it'll be nice to have finance here, questions as they come along.
Well, I think, my thought was, we should be intimately and not aware of our budget before we meet with finance, 'cause there's some things on here that, you know, we need to, you know, Diana's plugged numbers in, but, I, I don't wanna criticize Diana, but it's our budget.
Ask some questions about some of the numbers.
It's our budget, and we need to know, we need to know what it's for.
Absolutely, yeah, I would love for you to, you know, look at the numbers and, and, 'cause you might have ideas of how we can.
The only question I have to all of that is that, sometimes. The only question I have to all of that is that sometimes we go through a process, and into that process, we sort of have this thing, and now this thing breathes and moves on its own, and in the process, we never had sat down with Dave Sobel, we never sat down, and all of a sudden, we have this thing, we're moving towards May, and... So we just got to be careful to say, this is, you know, when we do this, we have to have the, the department heads involved as well.
But again, we're on, I'm only talking about our budget, and then doing their budgets too, but we should be more, we should be as intimate as we can with this budget, because this is, with this new building...
Well, some of those things actually involve Ed Colley, and I didn't really want to get into it, one of the things is trash pickup. We're paying, I don't know, three or four hundred dollars a quarter or a year, is it?
Three eighty a quarter.
Three eighty a quarter for trash pickup. Now, to, to transfer station, I don't know, someone comes by and picks up the trash, so this is...
We're paying our town employees to pick up our trash?
Yeah, we have that, so now we have two sites, now, we need really to sit down with Ed and talk to him.
Yeah, we are...
What is the real thought process behind this? Is it man hours, are they doing other things, and how do we sort of say, come on, I mean, is this something we really want to charge the town for? So I have those questions, I mean, sort of need Ed for that, yeah.
Should we put it on next week, next week we have a charter hearing, do we have time to, to talk about the budget?
In May, I mean, I, I don't know how long the hearing is gonna go, but, um, and Bob doesn't have anything in terms of, you know, detail information. I just asked him to come in just to, you know, because it's like David said, town meeting's only, what, six weeks away now, is it six weeks, or? No, maybe it's two months, two and a half months, but, um, but it's going by fast, and, you know, you haven't really had any information about the budget so far, so I just, and... They've had trouble getting some people's budgets, they, like David said, they've had trouble getting the revenue numbers, so I just think we should update you on what's going on.
Should we, next week after charter, have a brief period of time for just budget discussions?
Mm-hmm, sounds good.
A block of time for our budget, and if Bob wants us, a block of time for finance budget.
And do you want to hand out to the chiefs, in all?
I think at this point in time, you should be talking to, to, to finance, and then if, you know...
Again, that breathing thing that happens at the end, and some people feel left out.
I know, but we, but that's why we'll bring him in at the end.
Okay, right.
Alright. Um, Diana, that, was that you?
That was my town, no straight updates, yes, thank you.
Um, upcoming events, March ten, oh, well, starting tomorrow night, I have personnel policy board. March tenth is our meeting here with...
Building reuse.
Building reuse.
Six thirty, by the way.
Yeah.
Are we gonna open the, we have to open our meeting, we have to have a quorum?
No, we don't have to have a quorum.
Okay.
We posted it in case we have a quorum and we want to participate.
Because then maybe not.
So...
Talking to Diana?
I'll attempt, but we'll try.
Any questions that you want to ask, if you're not there, we could ask them for you.
I think at this point in time, why is the building leaky? Um, huh?
It's a hole in the roof.
Yeah, that's exactly, March, March, when we get the, yeah, when is the floor gonna get done in there? Why can't, you know, it's all five star, the buck stops at five star, he can try and get his money back from other people, but the work's gotta get done.
Just to, and about the plumbing, I spoke to the building inspector, what they have to do is have the rough plumber sign off that he's done before they hire somebody else in, and so then they can have somebody come in and do the finish work.
So that's true, what we talked about last week?
You don't have to go to the state, though, you just, you just, and they just did that on a house on East Street, they did do that?
They did, they wrote a letter, yeah.
So now we just got to get a, a finished plumber in there to hook up the utensils, but I...
Hook up the floor, the senior center floor.
We're still working on that.
Still working on that, but we could, we could do the appliances, I mean, that we, you know...
Move them in now, and now, be all the floors maxed up, and then, don't worry about it.
Um, the fifteenth is the charter hearing, and now some discussion on budgets. The twenty-second, anything planned yet, or just an open meeting?
I have with me the site's...
Um, that was, we'll be meeting with them a lot between now and...
We should meet with them every week, I think, as issues come on.
They want them every week.
Well, I mean...
Once a month, anyway.
Um, the other thing that's on the agenda is the planning board and building inspector and board of health for the dumpster regulations.
Look at the next page, Mike.
If you look at the next page, it has a listing.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Up and coming for meetings.
Some of it's just notes for you guys to remember, and...
That's a new addition to the meet thing, isn't it? That hasn't been there for... Huh?
Things to come.
Yeah, that's...
Is it, is the print fuzzy, or am I losing my eyes?
It's a little fuzzy, I think it's the, the program, it's a print screen of some kind of program.
Alright, so, that was the fifteen, the twenty-second is, um, town administrator review to be completed by April of two thousand and eleven. Is that on tonight's agenda?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Select board goals and objectives, hopefully by the end of the year.
Yeah.
Planning board, building inspectors, both dumpsters, uh, or both, be, board health, or something. And the twenty-ninth is open right now, and the fifth is the warrant, we don't want to miss that.
Never, never.
We all learned our lesson on that one.
Never.